All right, I'll call a meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our One Sports City Council meeting. It is Thursday, September 1st. We are in trade and transit two. Please rise for the invocation by Councilwoman Bonnie Katz, followed by the flag salute and roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Father, we thank you for all that you have blessed us with, a great city and great people. We thank you for understanding our strengths and weaknesses, and thank you for not letting us lose our sense of caring and our sense of humor. Watch over us tonight and guide us as we continue to make the right decisions. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Mrs. Frank, would you call the roll, please?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
I can't hear her.
Mrs. Katz.
There, I can hear you now. Here.
Mr. Yoder.
Here, we have a quorum. Item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from August 11th, 2022. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Is there any comments, questions, or items of discussion on the minutes? Here and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Limited courtesy, the floor, item four, we've had no requests tonight. We're going to jump around for the first couple of items here. We're going to start with, where am I at here? Item 13, if you would read that, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution awarding Graphius Run Preliminary Design Services to Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. I will turn it over to Mr. Sander and our esteemed guests from Wood Engineering.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So what you have before you is a resolution to hire wood, excuse me, wood engineering to do a conceptual design for Graphius Run. So I put out a RFP twice, twice actually, but the second go around got nine proposals. Really, three of them stuck out at me. One was wood, obviously, I also wouldn't be mentioning them, and two other ones as well. What we're looking to do here is, there's two big problems with Graphius Run, as I see it, and maybe you guys will also chime in. There's too much water coming down the basins, excuse me, down the, yeah, down the basins, and there's too much debris. So what we're looking to do here is size detention basins in some fashion, either on the west side or the east side, or combination of one or the other, maybe multiple basins, we'll see how it goes, to hold the water and to contain the debris so debris doesn't get clogged at the end much. So like I mentioned, there's nine proposals, costs for these proposals range from 20,000 to 118,000. Woods proposal was $63,000. This, with Woods' work in the contract, it also includes updating the interior drainage model that's required as part of our levy certification. So beyond, so this will give us a conceptual design that hopefully we'll be proposing to DEP. DEP is very interested. What we're looking to do here is, there's two big problems with Graphius Run, as I see it, and maybe Gaz will also chime in. There's too much water coming down the basins, excuse me, down the, yeah, down the basins, and there's too much debris. So what we're looking to do here is size detention basins in some fashion, either on the west side or the east side, or combination of one or the other, maybe multiple basins, we'll see how it goes, to hold the water and to contain the debris, so debris doesn't get clogged at the end much. So, like I mentioned, there's nine proposals, costs for these proposals ranged from 20,000 to 118,000. Wood's proposal was $63,000. This, with Wood's work in the contract, it also includes updating the interior drainage model that's required as part of our levy certification. So beyond, so this will get us a conceptual design that hopefully we'll be proposing to DEP. DEP is very interested in possibly funding this when it comes to property acquisition, if necessary, in construction. So let me know if you have any questions, and Gaz is here for any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sander. This was reviewed in Public Works, I believe, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Allison to speak to the discussion committee.
Yes, this was, excuse me, reviewed in Public Works. There's a lot of rich detail in this whole proposal. So to, you know, we don't have the time or the ability to dig into everything here. I think some of the high points are that this is a proposal that is going to have recommendations in it to remediate the problems that are there, which, and they're going to be specific recommendations, not just concept, well, we need a holding pond, or this here or there. Some specific different options and recommendations as far as placement and number of holding ponds and those kinds of things that will help remediate it. So I'm looking forward to that. We've never had that kind of detailed information brought forth before. I think a couple of the other things we talked about were, as John mentioned, it's going to address the interior problems that we need evaluated, and it's definitely the maintenance kind of thing we're concerned about. This is going to deal with the 150-year flood occurrences, so that will meet FEMA, and you might want to reference the schedule at the end, the proposed timeline. Since we're a little bit behind, that, when this was first proposed, it had a kickoff of September, of August 8th for kickoff, to be completed by November 30th. So probably, you know, bump everything a month to the end of the year, or the beginning of next year. But, you know, those are the high points that we talked about, and I'll defer to Mr. Pelisi if he has anything to add to that.
Thank you, Councilman Allison. Nothing really in depth, as Mr. Allison has already kind of touched on and pointed out, but this study is definitely long overdue. Graphius Run is certainly something that we need to get, get a hold of. So I look forward to it.
There was one done a handful of years ago by R2 in the lesser dollar figure, five, $10,000, and I looked at the capacity of the cover system and also the debris at the, right at the end. This is a much larger, bigger picture attack, and Gaz from Wood is here, if you have any questions for her specifically.
If I could add one more point that I forgot, I think on top of all this, we're going to have to bring Royal Sock Township into the conversation, too, because we can do all of these things and still have some problems caused by debris, and so we need a joint group that's going to work on that, you know, most likely the county and Royal Sock and ourselves, something of that kind of iteration.
This is pretty, this is pretty close to the northern edge of the city, so as Randy mentioned, we're getting pretty close to Royal Sock here.
Yep.
Appreciate the feedback from our members of our Public Works Committee, as John and others have mentioned, Gaz from Wood is here. If there's anything you'd like to add, I know you've came a long way to join us this evening, so I will at least want to give you the floor if there's anything you'd like to add, or...
Sure. Well, thank you for having me. I'm Gaz from Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions. Most of you may know me, so thank you. I think a couple important points about this analysis is that we're really trying to provide you with some metrics, some numbers that you can say would benefit your community by reducing flooding by X number of inches, or removing X number of properties from, from damage and flood, flood damages. So I hope that the value of that interior drainage analysis is conveyed in that regard, to use that model that we have, and then update it for the levy certification, as that would still be required in the future. So with that, I'll answer any questions. I don't want to take up a lot of your time if you don't have any specific questions.
Does anybody have any questions for?
Adam.
Yes, Bonnie.
Yes, John, did you mention that you're still going after DEP for some funding?
Yes, I'll touch on that. So what the, what we're looking to do here, and I've been in discussion with DEP's central office in Harrisburg, once we get a conceptual design that presented by Wood to the city, and we all like, we'll be taking that to DEP saying, here, here's our conceptual design. That's step one. Step two would be to get, as I see it, use, utilize Delta and Keller to get pressure on DEP to get funding, and then from there, DEP hopefully to put out a full-blown design project with a full plan set and everything to, to contract, so.
Do you know, John, do you know if, because we were earmarked with DEP about five years ago, and somehow it just got lost in the translation, which we were really disappointed, because at that point, DEP was really going to maybe fund the whole project. Do you think there's anything that would come about with that at this point?
Yes, they've asked me multiple times about the project to let them know that I had a RFP out. Obviously, they know that I have multiple proposals in. Once, if this gets awarded tonight, they'll know about it tomorrow. At that time, they had $3.5 million set aside as a potential project, not as a active project, so just to clarify there, Ms. Katz.
Okay, and Gaz, you, you, you know what Graphius Run is all about. You have been working on the levy for, Lord, how many years? It's got to be at least 10 years, I think. And Graphius Run has always been put in that, in that position with the levy, because in all honesty, that's, it is part of it, really, a part of the problem. So I'm happy that we're addressing this again. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from other members of council on the resolution?
When is payment due?
Wood typically invoices monthly. I believe our terms and conditions with the city are maybe 30 or 60 days. I'd have to look at our master services agreement.
If we're going to be taking this funding from our project, so we can plan accordingly.
Yeah, I would assume this would come out of the Graphius Run budget that we have in there now, which we're, have a good amount of money in there right now. So speaking of using ARPA money, I would like to take a moment to just commend John Sander. So at the last minute here today, I, last night, was finally able to look at a couple of things, and I had a handful of questions related to compliance, and he actually had it squared away pretty well. So, good job, and, and keep that up, especially when we're talking federal dollars, it gets really goofy, and we've all had, I think, learned through that, but I think we're turning a corner and able to really be effective in our planning and how we put things out, and make sure that we're compliant as we go about putting out these projects. So any other comments or questions for members of council? Yes, Liz.
Hey, just wanted to ask.
We're having trouble hearing you.
You still having trouble hearing me?
Still can't hear.
Well, that answers my question. Okay, thanks, Adam.
Yeah, sorry. All right, I guess she's going to try to log back in, and, all right, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy. Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thank you, Gaz. It was good to see you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item 14, a demolition application for 913 Poplar Street. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. I'll turn it over to Mr. Nar. Good evening.
Good evening, President Yoder and members of council. What I bring before you tonight is a request from the Noco Investment Group, LLC, to a recently acquired tax parcel, 6701201, which is north of their existing Minute Mark. It's, the address is actually 913 Poplar Street. What they are requesting to do is get city council's approval to demo the house in order for their future expansion of the Minute Mark there in Newberry. And I do have a representative present, and I can answer any questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nar. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? We do have a representative here from the, from the owner of the parcel. If we do have any questions for the owner specifically.
I do, Adam.
Floor is yours, Bonnie.
Yes, this Minute Mark has been expanding and expanding since the existence. You took off one house on one side of this, and I take it this is the property behind it at this point?
This is the property to the north of the Minute Mark.
The north of it, yeah. I mean, I think it's great. This business has been growing and growing, and I think the people in Newberry probably appreciate it tremendously, and I want to thank you.
Any other comments or questions for members of council? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. We're going to jump up now to item seven, if you would read that, Mrs. Frank.
Ordinance, ARPA transfer ordinance in first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. I will turn it over to Mr. Bider to introduce this. I know we have some guests from Lightcoming College in Pine Ridge that they're associated with this, so we'll work through this one. Mr. Bider.
Absolutely. If the representatives from Pine Ridge and Lightcoming College would please step forward while I go ahead and introduce this. What we are looking at today is a transfer ordinance for ARPA funds for a project that has been ongoing in the area known as Old City. We are looking to transfer $435,000 from Economic Development Future Projects Reserve, $200,000 from the Economic Development Contingency, and another $408,000 from the Recreation Future Projects Reserve. That number from Recreation also entails $143,000 for a Greenways project that will connect Basin Street, the bike path to the Basin Street exit there, again, connecting to Old City, allowing for much easier access. And then $900,000 of that would go towards the Old City Development Project that was reviewed in ERC several times, but most recently, Mr. Pelisi was chair for that, and I will let him have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bider. Yes, we reviewed this in ERC. I, I know we had a lot of questions the first time this one came up, and I very much appreciate the thorough job that was done to provide us with the, the answers to the questions that we had, we had asked. I know for myself specifically, I had inquired as far as the return on, on the city's investment of this project. I think the last time that, that we spoke, you know, we were looking at our return of approximately 16.2 years. However, I know that after going back and looking at the project and taking into account some of the, the other factors that weren't considered, they've done an excellent job to bring, like I said, a very robust analysis back to us, showing exactly that our total annual tax benefit to the city now, post-construction, is going to be a little over $200,000 annually recognized, bumping up our return on investment from approximately 16 years to just under four. So financially, I think this is an absolutely great project for the city to get involved in. And then, on another note, I, I'm very much looking forward to, to seeing the, the Old City revitalization start to take place. I think it could be a great catalyst for everything that we're looking to do. I know, Mr., you have to forgive me, Mr. Allison was, or was also sitting in with me. Did you have anything that you'd like to add, sir?
No, it was very informative to be at that meeting, and to catch up on everything and see how quickly and things have come together, because it's a complex project in different ways, a lot of moving parts, but I credit everyone there that was, that's involved in this, the college, Pine Ridge, Delta, everybody. It's, it's one of those great cooperative efforts that we've seen all along in the Gateway Project area that is, is going, has made it successful thus far, and I'm more sure than ever it's going to be, have the success that we envisioned in the beginning. So, yeah, that's all I can say, and, and I second everything Vince had to say about the, the dollars and cents. I guess, well, I'll let you continue that part. I did have one question on the, the transfer ordinance, how we're going to fund this.
Thank you. No, if I may, I just want to touch on a couple of the questions and concerns that were brought forth beforehand, just for the record. As far as the, the assurances or the level of certainty with the city, we, we did have concerns and questions as far as the commitments for the retail space, to which we've already, we've been shown and told that this, this project already does have multiple letters of intent for tenancy, so we feel much more certain as far as this project moving forward is going to be successful. In new, in reference to the townhome residential development for the project, we know that, I believe, and feel free to step in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think there's seven reservations already on the townhomes and another additional one letter of intent?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And the park, there were some questions about the park that we, we went over. Again, the questions regarding to, is this going to be open to the public? What are the times for the park? Who's going to monitor the park? I think the, the questions were answered very well, that this park is going to be open to the, the public. We'll be looking at a six to seven, potentially, six AM to seven at night. Thank you for the park to be open to the public on the weeknights, and potentially 10 to 11 on the weekends. Again, there is the prospect of having security detail at the park for the safety of, of all the people that are, that are taking part of the park, and they will also be cleaning the park to make sure it stays in a kept manner, and that the parking deck is going to be open to the public after a set period of time, like we have with some other projects, or with some other properties here in the city, so the public has use to the parking deck, too. Again, I know we went over this more in depth in ERC, but I just want to make sure everybody in the public knows and understands exactly, exactly where we are at with this project and what they look to gain out of it. So with that, I turn it over to the rest of council. Thank you.
I know Delta, Lightcoming College, Pine Ridge are here. I, I think they're prepared to present as well, if, if we would like them to present on everything and to help inform the public on this as well. So I'm happy to turn it over to you if you want to kick that off.
Yes, my name is Leroy Klein. I serve as the president of Delta Development Group. I think you've been provided an excellent overview of the project. I can assure you, ERC evaluated the materials very carefully, raised a lot of questions. I will reduce my comments to two things. In your packets that we distributed and the ones that we sent out prior to your meeting tonight, there is attachment two. I've had an opportunity to be in council, in front of council enough to know that you always like to see a comprehensive review of what the funding looks like for the project. Attachment two provides that for you. As of this moment, we're looking at a 22 Uh, as of this moment, we're looking at a twenty two point nine million dollar project. We've made a request to the county, which has been adopted in a resolution. We've submitted an R cap request that we are pretty excited about, and then there's the city role that has been outlined. But what I wanted you to see is is probably in all the times that I've been in front of council, uh, the best return on your investment in that the city role here is approximately three percent of the overall project budget, three point five percent. The county role is about three point nine percent, and the state role is about three point nine percent. The private development that your funds leverage for this project is roughly eighty eight percent of the project budget or twenty two point nine million dollars. The other thing that the councilman talked about was really illustrated in attachment four. We were asked to provide a more comprehensive illustration of the economic impact of the project. Attachment four provides it. It gives you the construction impacts. It gives you the operational impacts. It provides the tax impacts, the zoning permit reviews, the real estate transfer taxes, the employment taxes that are generated from the future project. We did not use a multiplier. We did not use subsequent development. We did not use any ancillary benefits. We did it strictly on the project and what we could clarify with the numbers so that we could point directly to where those impacts were. And as it been identified, your return on investment would be provided in less than four years. The other thing, though, that we've talked about and that we're excited about is that we view this as a destination attraction, which means that every person that comes to the city to take advantage of these new facilities creates economic impacts which are not illustrated in this model. And for that purpose, I'll turn it over to Jerry to share his vision for what that might look like.
Thank you, Leroy. I, one, I appreciate council entertaining us this evening, give us opportunity to present to the public. I kind of hear about the project that has been somewhat in the news and hopefully, uh, well put out there as to what it encompasses, but a a quick synopsis is that it's a three-phase project which brings in residential over retail in phase one. It brings in a large commercial building with a living roof on phase two and a parking garage which should support uh, the whole project and also some additional uh, needs within the East End. Uh, the East End has limited parking out there right now for those who go down to that portion that that portion of the city. The living roof itself, which I believe is the biggest portion of the project, uh, encompasses a beer garden playground, uh, real public park where everybody can come spend a true day there, uh, bringing in trees, uh, natural grasses, a spot where you can uh, have your lunch, have a drink, watch your kids play, and spend the day and listen to some live music. The whole concept is to bring people back to that neighborhood as owners, as tenants, as participants in that portion of the city along with the college. Uh, as Dr. Tracky might talk about today, it's the concept of a blurred campus where kids can come off, be part of the community, but also know that we're living there as owners, as residents, as taxpayers. Uh, for many who know, these parcels of the property will come back on the tax rule, which as Leroy showed you guys will be a positive impact on the community. The whole vision was to have somebody come down there, hit their bakery, hit their barber shop, have their house there, spend the day, listen to music, uh, and watch the kids play, so. It really brings back a vibrant need to that portion of the of the city itself. Um, how we came to be was doing RP that was put out there, understanding architecturally what was asked, you know, blend into the college, blend into Old City, make something that stands as a part of the community, but doesn't stand out as something new in the community. It gives you that feel that it truly is Old City. Uh, I I think when you look at the components that we put together through our architecture team, all that's been met. For the city's part, being able to have a parking structure downtown, being able to have a park downtown, it needs that true public-private partnership uh, between the college, between the state, the county, and hopefully the city tonight. While I'll be partners in this together to bring back some heartbeat to that portion of the city. Glad to answer any questions. I know Dr. Tracky, uh, who's been a part of this whole vision from the start, would love to give you guys a little bit of overview of where he started when he first got here and how it came to be tonight.
Thanks, Jerry. Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor and others. I had an opportunity at a recent groundbreaking to reflect upon a little bit of the history, and I think it's important that um, everyone in the public know uh, that the council has been, along with the administration, a leader in bringing forward the concept of revitalization of Old City. During my earliest months in office, there were several council members who, without violating sunshine laws, um, came to meet with me. Randy, I believe that you were part of that contingent. Uh, and they asked me a simple question whether I was the kind of president who saw like home and colleges having a role in working with others to revitalize the neighborhood um, in which the college is located. And I think my answer was probably a little longer than yes, uh, but it was essentially in the affirmative. And then, um, as you may know from there, uh, a commission was appointed, and Congresswoman Mealy served on that commission and represented council um, along with members of um, representative of the county commissioners, property holders in the area, and a comprehensive vision um, for Old City grew out of um, that commission. This council adopted that report um, when it was presented uh, from the commission. So again, the council was in um, a leadership role um, in this regard. Uh, and I have to say that um, I'm pleased that we can come back to council at this point now and ask for your further participation and cooperation. There were many other projects that have been part of Old City revitalization, the construction of the Basin Street Boulevard, uh, the um, uh, enhancement of streetscape on Third Street. There are additional projects to come, and council and the administration have always stepped forward, and the college has been honored to be able to have the opportunity to be a partner um, in all of this work. Um, as you know, um, we made some investments in the area uh, with our craft gateway center and now the mu- music center to give some um, initial um, sense of change taking place in the neighborhood. Um, and uh, the college through its donors invested twenty plus million dollars um, in those facilities, and uh, we are delighted that we have now found a visionary partner um, in Pine Ridge who really shares the concept of a livable, walkable, old city neighborhood that Randy was so much part of the original vision and Liz, when the commission did its work as well. Um, and I'm just can't tell you how excited I am, and I hope you'll choose to continue to participate um, this evening, and we will um, in fact, realize that dream or that vision of having a livable, walkable, old city neighborhood. So thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you very much for uh, for your your commentary, your words, and and for being here and being a great partner for the city. Um, you know, I I go back to, I remember you saying that at the groundbreaking, Dr. Trocky. This has been a long time coming, but um, it was it was city council that really initiated this, like probably close to a decade ago, um, and it's, you know, um, it really speaks to the foresight that this body had a while back, um, that the work that uh, the 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 need for economic development and the need for community development in that neighborhood, and we're finally seeing the fruits of that of that work today, um, which is great to see, and I'm excited for it. So thank you very much. We've had a lot of discussion and conversation. Are there any questions? Randy, I know you had a question about, I think, the individual monetary line items.
Yeah, from the um, funding from ARPA, but yeah, I do want to just thank all these gentlemen, and Dr. Tracky was the first one we went to, and he's he's done this before. He did it in his uh, in Lancaster with Franklin Marshall. Well, you did. You learned well, so we thank him as well. But um, you were uh, able to take that and adapt it to to this area with uh, which, you know, we'll be forever grateful because I do believe this is going to be successful um, in a lot of different ways. And the other tie-in is years ago, we were discussing parking downtown, and we were looking for a place to put another parking deck. Um, and we discussed that in depth and had discussed different areas. Um, so that's not a new concept either, but we're glad we're glad that it's a fresh concept coming forth. Um, so, you know, I'm totally comfortable with that, and I do believe it's going to fit in well with what we need downtown on that part. We were looking for something on the uh, east side of of Market Street, so it's it's going to fill that need to, excuse me, need as well. And uh, it's a place, it's going to enable people more traffic in that area as things develop, so that's all great. So um, yeah, I just want to, you know, reconfirm I'm I'm a hundred percent behind this. Uh, and Vince, thanks for pushing for those uh, dollar numbers because it's right there in black and white that within four years, um, it it's already met whatever investment we put in. I think that's a pretty good turnaround in anybody's financial game. So um, you know, we're grateful for that as well. What what I'm looking at is the um, the money coming from recreation. Um, four hundred eight thousand. Now I see the Greenway Trails Connector makes sense at a hundred forty three thousand. Uh, the rest to me is economic development, and um, I I don't see a reason to take more out of recreation to uh, to put into when we have money set aside for economic development that we don't even have plans for at this point. So I think this is a good place to even that out.
Hey, Adam, can I break in there?
Good one.
Uh, I would agree with Randy on the on his observations in terms of the funding sources. It would seem to me like we can always transfer funding at some later date from recreation into economic development if we decide that we need more funding there. But we did all agree that the split between recreation and economic development was as it was, so it seems like all the elements of this, um, because all the funding is going toward either parking garage, it's water infrastructure, et cetera, that that all of that funding should currently be coming from economic development. But that that would be my observation. Yeah, I think that Randy has a point there.
So the so the question is really, or I guess the concern is, where do we find remain the where where else could we pull that chunk that is from recreation towards this from somewhere else? I guess the question is, is is this really, is there really a recreation component to this project? Is that, am I understanding that right? That's the way I.
Uh, yes, that's that correct, Randy. I mean, there is, we understand that there is a park component to this project, but we're not funding the park component. It's my it's my understanding of it. Correct, Randy? Is that what you're thinking?
I thought we were funding the park component.
I mean, everything.
Yeah, when we met with you, we talked about converting it to the structure itself so that if there were any questions about eligibility, we were public infrastructure, and so it's not specific to the park, it's specific to the structure.
Gotcha. I I I got you, okay. I was going to counter that. I I was of the impression that there was a recreation component to this. In my mind, that does make sense, but given that there is not, um, I mean, I I I understand that, and I would agree, I mean. In second reading, do a transfer and put that back into recreation, and then whether it's taking it from one of the other two areas that we have money budgeted for economic development, whether it's the land bank, whether it's the redevelopment authority, um, or whether it's public works, um, we we have other options, so. If it's if if this is not going towards a park on the parking deck, then I I that makes sense to me also. I was of the impression it was though, so. So that makes sense.
All right. And and I would secondarily point out, Adam, that that I would have perhaps a little bit of fear that if we were putting money into the park, we could be perceived as being part owner slash part responsible for the park. Do you see what I'm saying? I I think I'm glad that it is that it's a grant toward the parking garage. Um, because public recreation to me implies perhaps city responsibility, and and moving forward, if it's not going to be something we're economically or you're economically responsible for, then, you know, perhaps it's better initially that this funding isn't used for that.
Understood. Um, I think in second reading, we're going to want to think about what each of us will be comfortable pull what what other bucket we'd be comfortable pulling the balance of this from. I don't want you thinking that we're saying, no, we're just going to give you you know, part of it. Um, I think we would just want to look at maybe pulling it from a different bucket, so. Just to clarify for you guys. Any other comments or questions? That's a that's a that's a good.
Adam, I do.
Yes, Bonnie.
Um, first of all, Dr. Tracky, I want to thank you for everything that you've done for our city since the day you arrived. Everything that you have done has been absolutely wonderful. And to be part of this project, I think is even going to be even better yet. We've all wanted that area of the city to start growing and looking uh, absolutely beautiful, and this is going to look absolutely beautiful when it's said and done. The the question I have is with the parking deck. The parking deck, yes, this is something that we've talked about for, I don't even know how many years, that when things for businesses down in that area, you will need a parking deck. And if somebody could answer me, since this is going to be done privately, this is uh, this will be done and taken care of privately, then I take it. And with the cost of parking be equivalent to what the cost of parking is in our other parking decks that are owned by the city.
Uh, the concept of the parking structure is to keep it market rate comparable with what other towers you guys have downtown.
Fantastic, but I think it's a great idea because there is no place to park down there for the businesses and and the new homeowners that were thrilled to pieces that they're going to be moving in that area. So that was the only question in that, and I take it you would be taking care of the parking deck. Uh, will be open twenty four seven.
Uh, the parking structure will be open twenty four seven, and the nice part about the parking structure is that there are a lot of dedicated leases that operate eight to five PM every day, uh, which then gives a secondary turn on those same parking spots uh, on evenings, uh, weekends and holidays. So there's multiple points for this to be a uh, a cash generating uh, structure as opposed to a lot of parking decks downtown right now.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, and thank you again for all you're doing for this project. I think it's a fantastic project, and like I said, it is going to be do so much for that area of the city. Thank you all.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Hey, Adam, could I? Can I ask one more question? Thank you. Um, so my only other question is that the discussion that we had um, just a couple of minutes ago about the construction and build-out plans, I I think um, pine has stood out on three phases of construction. Could you repeat that for me one more time?
Yeah, so there are three phases of construction project. We break it down by the three components of the residential retail, uh, one which comes down Third Street. The second phase, which is a blended phase between the parking structure and the commercial building, they kind of overlap each other, but phase two would be the forty thousand square foot commercial building, which again comes up Basin Street and then returns down Fourth Street. Uh, that overlaps construction time period with the three-level, the four-level parking structure.
Okay, that I I think you've just answered my question, which was the city has committed funding to projects in the past that were multi-phase, um, but then not all of the phases came to fruition. Um, but it sounds as though all of these phases are operating more or less simultaneously. It's not as that you're trying to build the retail and then build the parking structure a year later or something, correct?
No, our our timeline has a starting phase one uh, here this fall with an anticipated completion in late spring to early summer of twenty two.
Of the entire project.
Viable, we need to have the parking structure work kind of hand in hand with that uh, with that building.
Okay.
Parking and obviously visitor parking.
Okay, then that then, yes, the only question I had related to whether we needed to commit the funding now if the if that phase of the project wasn't occurring currently, but it but it sounds as though it's all happening simultaneously, so that was everything. Thanks very much.
And uh, just to clarify, as of officially this afternoon, um, we have formed two limited liability corporations, of which the college is minority member. So the college will continue to be involved with Pine Ridge in the design, operation, uh, and so on of this project. And I can assure you, Congress. And I can assure you, Congress, uh, Councilwoman, it's going to all get done. If I could just follow up with one last.
Oh, Mr. Trakty, I'm, I'm, I'm well aware of that in this case, but previous experience, of course, causes me to just ask all the questions just in case. But, uh, but that said, I, I am, well, as Bonnie said, this, this has been a project pretty much the entire time that I've been on city council. And it was something that I was so excited about in the beginning and I can't tell you how excited I am to see this element of the vision coming to fruition, especially because this to me was the piece of the kind of initial project that we all envisioned that would trigger a lot of economic development in that neighborhood. And so the fact that this piece is happening, I think means it, it has significance for a sea change in that area of town. Um, so thank you gentlemen for making this a reality.
Just to close out with a final thought, as I spend a lot of time traveling central Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania in general and most of the country throughout construction. This particular project, I think, gives Williamsport the opportunity to develop something that is not, not common in this area. Uh, a multi-facet, uh, multi-use project that can be used, uh, with a rooftop. You know, you look at what we have here at our resources, at our drivable avail- availability, there's nothing like this. Uh, this becomes a true destination within its first phase. And this is what we call globally, our first phase of East End revitalization. Looking at a true live, work, play environment, I can't think of one that is close by that we can go to uh, that all of our residents can enjoy and see the different amenities there. So with that, you know, the college had an R P through Delta. They thoughtfully thought out what they would wanna see come there. And I do truly believe that Dr. Trakty, Leroy Klein, they had the best interest of the total city when they put that out there. And I think that what we proposed to you guys has the best interest on all the city, but of central Pennsylvania. So with that, I, I thank you guys for the time today.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Outside of, uh, thinking of where we wanna pull money from for second reading. All right, hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank won the motion for item seven, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Vider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes and first reading seven zero. Thank you very much for your work in the East End and for being here this evening. It's great to see you and we're thankful for the partnership.
Uh, thank you to all of you guys.
All right, moving on, we will go, I think in order at this point. Um, so we'll go to item five, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance vacating Spring Garden Street in the eighth ward in final reading.
Is there a motion in a second? So moved. Second motion in a second, Mr. Nar, just in time for, uh, yes.
Good evening, President Yoder, members of council and others. This is a second reading of the vacation of Spring Garden Street at the request of the city. What this will actually do is tie into the old city development. It'll vacate that and will give future development to the Salvos restaurants, the Salvos restaurants to future into the Old Cities project.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. We passed this in first reading a few weeks ago. Any comments or questions before we vote for a second reading? Okay. Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank won the motion in second reading, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Vider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item six, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amending part one of the codified ordinances of the city of Williamsport in final reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Um, this is just second reading to modify to incorporate remote into, um, committee meetings. So nothing super crazy. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank won the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Vider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item eight, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution for approval of settlement. P M F Industries Incorporated for tax assessment appeal.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Mr. Lubin. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, what you have before you is that, uh, the county tax assessment office has recommended resolution of a, a tax appeal by P M F Industries. And, um, as part of it, they're, we're, uh, submitting a stipulation to, uh, the court for formal approval of the settlement of the tax appeal. Uh, this was supposed to have been tried sometime in the spring. And I was notified by Mr. Grimes and it had been resolved. And finally, as you can see in the letter, uh, August twenty-second is when I finally received the, uh, uh, the settlement documents. There's one other case that will be probably presenting at the next meeting, uh, that I understand is now, has also been resolved. On the tax assessment appeals that the county has approved it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lubin. Are there any comments or questions? This was not reviewed in committee, so, um, we don't have any thing to add from that perspective, but are there any comments or questions related to the, uh, tax appeal resolution? I think we see these every once in a while. We never unfortunately see anybody appealing that it should be higher. But, um, you know, they're always, they're always appealing them lower and I assume this is the case. I think the biggest thing that would really help this, um, we really need a reassessment countywide. It's been almost twenty years.
Two thousand and four was the last reassessment. Um, and right now, cause we have the one problem that it's facing. When Nick Grimes was treasury board out a number of times is, uh, we have the high common level ratio number.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, uh, effective July first, it went up again.
Yeah, so if we really want a solution to this, um, we really need a reassessment countywide. And unfortunately, we have no ability to do that. That comes down to three commissioners deciding to do that. Um, and they actually don't really have to do it. There's no legal mechanism that forces them to do that. So between our representation in Harrisburg and our representation in the county, um, we need, we need some help. So, um, we absolutely need some help. And I understand this is a political issue, um, locally at least, but, um, I, I feel confident in saying, if the reassessment was done, I think a majority of people like all of us sitting here that are out there in the public are really probably gonna benefit from it, um, realistically. They actually, actually might see a reduction in their taxes, I, I think.
What has happened historically in the past is, um, about a third of the properties see an increase. About a third remaining the same and a third go down. And the other thing is that if there's an increase, uh, in the tax assessment value, then there has to be a corresponding decrease in the middle trade.
Correct. So we can't make money off of that. That's what that means.
There's a limit.
Correct.
How much there can be an increase in revenues.
Correct. So a hundred percent, so my whole point is, it, this is long overdue and, and hopefully we can get something done um, at the county level specifically.
You know, as for the count, from the county's perspective, I know that in addition to the political battle is also, there is a cost to, uh, doing an assessment.
Uh, there certainly is, but, um, you know, there's a, as, as, I think the seven of us very well know, there's a cost to doing, you know, governmental business. Um, there's a cost for us to keep the streets clean. There's a cost for us to plow the, the snow. From the county's perspective, there's a cost to doing an assessment. I mean, and that's their scope, right? So, um, yeah, it's tough, but nonetheless, here we are. Any other comments or questions? Sorry, I didn't mean to get too much on a soapbox, but happens. Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank won the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Vider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item nine, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution renewal for unit trends backup recovery solution.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Mr. Black.
Navy Council, President Yoder, and the members of council. Yeah, before you, a resolution just to, uh, renew our agreement with Unitrans for our backup and recovery solution that we have with them. It is for a total of ten thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-three dot, ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. Uh, this is for a one-year period.
Okay. Um, this was reviewed in finance, I believe, Ms. Mealy.
This was reviewed in finance, Adam, and, uh, there, the discussion mainly centered around a, a question of how far into our contract with Unitrends we currently were. Mr. Black, did you, you, you didn't achieve any more clarification on that, correct? If we're, if this is year four?
No, I did not see anything.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah. Yeah, rec- records wise, we're, we're not quite certain where we are in our contract with Unitrends, but there was a, um, in the contract in small print, there was a note that, um, that year four, we would see a thirty percent increase, but I think perhaps implication that we would see that then in successive years following that. Uh, so Mr. Allison, um, justly asked exactly what year we were in. But Mr. Black assures us that, uh, that moving forward after this year, um, he's looking at a different solution for our backup storage. Um, and, uh, and so this, you know, that, that we would likely either stop, stop these services around next year anyway, or we would perform, you know, find a completely different program for, for dealing with these services that we're currently purchasing for Unitrends. That, uh, ten thousand dollars does, um, include the repair, replacement of any hardware associated, um, with these services. Um, and so, um, the finance discussion was generally positive, uh, around this item. Thank you, Mr. Yoder.
Any other comments or questions related to the resolution? Okay, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank won the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Vider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item ten, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution of the city of Williamsport authorizing the submission of an application for funding to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the redevelopment assistance capital program in the amount of, and not to exceed four million dollars for River Valley Plaza, Starbucks and Williamsport Improvement Project.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. I'll turn it over to Mayor Slaughter and let me first apologize, for whatever reason, I did not put two together that you were here for the RAC P. Uh, uh, if I would have, uh, put two, two together, I would have moved you up ahead of time, but my apologies and thanks for sticking with us. Mayor Slaughter, good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Katz, members of council and the administration. What you have before you is a resolution for the city to serve as a pass-through, uh, for RAC P application. Not to exceed four million, four million dollars. This is for, uh, River Valley Plaza. Again, we've been talking about Old City quite a bit tonight. This is also, uh, in the Old City corridor, uh, to do, uh, some upgrades and a facelift to the, uh, to the River Valley Plaza there. Uh, and so it was reviewed in finance, as you can see, and as you mentioned, there are uh, folks here with us tonight that can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. This was reviewed in finance, Ms. Mealy.
Yes, Adam, this was reviewed in finance. Um, and, uh, and once again, the discussion was, uh, was quite positive. Um, the city, as, as Mayor Slaughter noted, is acting through a pass, as a pass-through entity for this. There, there are no costs to the city aside from a relatively minor amount of, uh, staff time to kind of pass these documents through. We will not oversee, um, any of the filing of paperwork associated with this, um, with this grant application, which is the real kind of time, time stack of redevelopment and capital assistance program grants. Um, this, uh, you know, consequently, there's, there's very little coming from the city. I think of note from our discussion, um, this grant is effectively competing in this particular redevelopment and capital assistance program round, um, with another grant, um, that grant application, grant pre-application technically for RAC P, um, that we authorized the filing of, um, a couple of months ago for Times Square. Uh, and, um, while it's certainly possible the Commonwealth could fund both projects, perhaps it might be a little unlikely that they would fund the entirety of the, of the grant amount for those. Um, that said, uh, this is, you know, a, a really exciting, um, redevelopment project. Once again, in the Old City, um, another opportunity to revitalize a neighborhood that it has long needed some attention in the city. Um, and, uh, and the finance committee thought it was well worth this application. Um, but the last thing, I don't think we've done any, we, we've discussed how redevelopment and capital assistance program grants work in the past, but we haven't talked about it yet this meeting. This is a, a pre-application and if we, if, um, the applicant is to receive funding, they will then complete a much more onerous full application come November. Um, I believe we might have someone there from Penn Strategies, but I'm not certain if so. I'm sure that they can explain this in a bit more detail. Um, but this is just the first, first step in a series of steps, um, for, uh, to, to the point where the applicant actually receives the funding. Um, as I said, the discussion in finance was, uh, was quite positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Uh, there are, uh, members from the, the application team here, Penn Strategies, et cetera. I'll be happy to turn the floor over to you to add anything you would like to.
Sure, thank you. First, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. President, uh, Madam Vice President, I hope you're recovering well. Councilwoman Katz, I hope you can hear me, and, uh, members of council and the administration. Um, as the mayor indicated, this is a continuation of the growth of Old City. When you look at, uh, you come into that part of the city, this is really the true gateway. Um, and for a number of years, um, you know, the facility has looked a little bit dated. Um, you know, it's a great place, but looks a little bit dated and what these gentlemen are going to do. And, and Mr. Mahansky will be here to just briefly tell you what he's gonna do. And then Nate White, uh, Mr. White is here to answer any specific project details. Uh, but what we are asking for tonight is for the city to serve as the pass-through entity. Um, Councilwoman Mealy is correct that the city will be requesting two RAC P grants. Um, we're cautiously optimistic about both of them. If you recall, um, the year that Lycoming College received two million dollars and, uh, Lycoming Engines received two million dollars and the Pyjama Factory received two million dollars. So the total number of requests this year is significantly less than six million. So we're confident that all the projects in the city, uh, should get approved. And I know that in speaking with, uh, with the folks from, from Delta and from, uh, the other companies that, that talked before, we're all on the same page that we want all of these things to be approved. Um, and we're cautiously optimistic that they can be. Um, as Councilwoman Mealy suggested, uh, there will be no administrative responsibilities from the city of Williamsport. Uh, we've been hired to handle the administration on these grants if and when they're approved. And, um, you know, our job will be to coordinate those efforts between the city of Williamsport, the sub-applicant and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Um, you are correct, Councilwoman Mealy, in the way that the redevelopment assistance capital program works. There will be an announcement, we hope, in October. Um, at that time, if we're successful, we'll be asked to submit a more detailed application. And just for the record, we had asked for, uh, an amount not to exceed four million because we didn't submit the grant until last week. We'll be requesting one point seven million for this project, just so that you're aware. Um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Rick Mahansky to introduce himself and talk to you a little bit about the project. Thank you. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter, and thank you, council, for listening to us tonight. This is all gonna tie together with, uh, what, uh, the previous speaker talked about with the gateway to Williamsport. Three years ago, I purchased the Basin Street Plaza because I saw a diamond in the rough. At the time, it was three quarters full and I'm happy to say now that it's, uh, one hundred percent full and, um, And that's providing for families and it's providing tax base. I want River Valley Plaza to be the jewel of Williamsport. It is the gateway to Old City. It truly is the gateway to Old City. It's an important part of the revitalization plan, and it's the first impression you get when you get off of Basin Street of Williamsport. First impressions are everything. We've heard that before, whether it be the first job interview or a first date. The first impression means a lot and it's going to hold true for River Valley Plaza. River Valley Plaza is going to make that first impression. When potential Lycoming College students come down Basin Street with their parents and their grandparents, the first thing they're going to see is the plaza. Now, are they going to see a plaza from the 1980s? Are they going to see a plaza that's modern and up to date? And they're going to say, hey, this is a great place. You're 200 yards from the college. You can walk down here. You can get a coffee. You can get a Jersey Mike sub. You can get your nails done. You can get your hair cut. You can get Chinese food. So it's going to play a big part in making that connection with the college. And we already spoke to Dr. Tracty about making that connection. We have different suggestions and maybe things such as a 10% off card, et cetera. But we want to make that connection. And we want to make this a plaza that makes a statement. They talked about the palace, putting up the palace. We have the gateway and we really need to make it a gateway that makes a statement. So I just want to say thank you for listening to us. And we will make Williamsport proud if we get this to go through. Thank you. And I want to introduce the project manager, Nate White. Do you have any questions for Nate?
Hi, city council. Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your support. I'm just going to give a 20,000 foot view. Rick kind of summed up a lot of it. What we're looking to do is, this has been a year and a half process of figuring one solution out after next. We started off at the plaza. We wanted to renovate that, update it, you know, bring in potential more clients, have a nice entrance. Then we started talking with our corporate partners at Starbucks, Fortune 100 Company. And they've been on board, helping us design a new exterior and interior. And we're working with Glen O. Hallbaker's to design a new parking lot system to increase efficiency, have a second drive through, which will boost sales. Typically, they say 9% on a franchise, so. And we have a rear parking lot where we have Realtors Association in there. We have Williamsport Pottery Barn, which they kind of take a look, took a leap of faith and put their spots back there with the promise that we're going to pave that back parking lot. So we're looking to just update the whole area parking lot, make it more efficient, user friendly. We have 19 businesses in there. And like Rick said, it's, it's the gateway to the city. So we have 26,000 cars go by there a day, doctors, professors, college students. They're going to see this when they come in the city. It seems like a win, you know, for the city and for everybody, so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And I also just say thanks very much for investing in the city, both not only procuring the property, but putting money into it and making our gateway into the city that much better. So thank you very much.
I have a question. I have a question, Adam.
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank you all for all the work you're doing with this. This plaza has been there for forever and some really great businesses there. I do go get my nails done at the one place that's there, TNT. I will promote them. And as I'm sitting there, that is, if you sit there and see all the traffic that goes through that plaza within the hour that I sit there, it's amazing, absolutely amazing. I'll be anxious to see what your plans are as far as what improvements you're going to do with the plaza. But like I said, there's so many great businesses that are in there and some that have been there forever. So I'm pleased to see that this is going to come to fruition. And do you have any renderings at all? Or are you just waiting to see where we stand?
Yes, we actually have about a dozen of them, parking schematics, plans for the exterior, and we're actually going to send those over to the mayor's office tomorrow and he can disperse them to the council.
Wow.
Thank you.
Not only the front is going to be renovated, but the back too is also going to be renovated.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Bonnie, we'll get copies to you, but it, they, they look, they look wonderful.
Thank you. I, you know, I'm excited about this. This, this is like, to say it's part of that whole transition in that area. I mean, and, and I think everybody should be excited about what's going on in that area. And, and once we get the riverwalk straightened out, I think I'm going to do fantastic.
One last thing, Bonnie, I think that you'll be impressed with, that we're going to bring up the level of clientele in there too. But by that, I mean, once we get this thing finished and everyone's going to be required to have a sign that matches, they're going to be professional signs. So we're, we're, there's not going to be any flapping in the wind signs like there are right now with flashing lights, so.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of mishmash in the plaza there.
The mishmash will be gone and we're going to get some creative unity.
And thank you, Jason, too, for all the work you're doing with this.
You're here. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I love that build out on the front. Is that just a concept or is that something's going to be on, on the front of the plaza?
Build out. The copper oblique, the song.
First one we came up with, we changed some of the materials. We started working with Starbucks corporate and they have a approved material list. So we'd kind of piggyback off some of them, some of the newer materials. So, you know, it's going to be
Yeah.
close, but a little newer, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that. Yeah, that's a great, great movement right there. I've, I've heard that our Starbucks is one of the busiest in the state.
Second, second busiest.
Well, that's one of them. That's, you know. Wow. That's amazing. And, but it speaks to the value of that area. So, yeah, I think this is, and originally, when we talked about the gateway, you know, it was really a lot of the thought was to that side of the street, you know, everything down there, because that, that hasn't really been as developed as the, the other parts aren't as developed themselves, but that was, had the least amount of development in it. And so, you know, this, it'd be great catalyst, I believe, for that whole area.
Like I said, Randy, the amount of traffic that goes through that whole plaza and that area with Starbucks is unbelievable. Unbelievable.
Certainly is, yeah.
Well, let's take it, let's take it over State College. Let's make, let's make it number one. So. There you go. Well said, Randy, and I completely agree. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you all very much for being here, for your patience, and, and thank you for the investment in the city that you're making. We're thankful. Item 11, continuing on, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution awarding professional services for levy inspection to Jordan Services Incorporated.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. I'll welcome back Mr. Sander.
Yes, yes, good evening again. So this is a levy maintenance item every five years for the Army Corps of Engineers. We have to get A, our cross pipes videoed, video inspected. I put this out, the ARP. Got two companies for professional services on this. One, this company for Jordan, of Jordan Services Incorporated for 132,800. Another firm that was over $310,000. So I've been in contact with this Jordan Services Incorporated. They're out of Ohio, currently up, they're currently doing these services in Ohio right now. And they also have five or six jobs in the state of PA as well. They're looking forward to, if awarded, working for the city. Like I mentioned, this is a requirement every five years per the Army Corps. We have 70 or so cross pipes need to be looked at, looked through, make sure they're clear and cleaned out, et cetera. There's a handful of maintenance related items that our Streets and Parks Forces are required to do as part of this. And I, Scott and I spoke earlier and he's good with those as well, so. Funding would be ARPA and this was discussed at Public Works today.
Thank you, Mr. Sander. This was discussed at Public Works, Mr. Allison.
Yes, we did review it. There's a lot of technical things in, in the proposal, as you would expect. And as, as John mentioned, this has to be done. We have, it's part of the maintenance and to take a snapshot of where we're at, you know, where the infrastructure that, and we know it's all about infrastructure. We've learned that, if nothing else, over the past decade or so. But the one question that we talked about somewhat, are there, there are responsibilities on the city side. And we talked, Scott Livermore was also in on our meeting. So we just wanted to address our personnel hours that, that might be required. There's some, if there's a fusion in stuff that comes out of the pipes, we're responsible for some of that cleanup possibly if it's over a certain amount. And there were, there's a list of things, you know, 2,500 gallon water truck and provided and hooking up the fire hydrants, all of that flagging. There's just a list of things that, you know, we just want to nail down with our Streets and Parks Department as we get into this, before we get into the process, just so we can have a smooth operation. And so turn it over to Mr. Pelisi, who was also there.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. I appreciate the fact that you brought those up during, during Public Works. So some of those things that are kind of out of sight, out of mind, you don't think about it until it's right in front of you. So thank you for making everybody aware. The one thing I did want to just bring up, just knowing that this is, you know, it's, it's going to be routine maintenance
Yep.
that we're going to have to do, I believe it's every five years. Yep. And I mean, thankfully, we have the ARPA funds here to cover the cost of this currently. But, you know, I, I wanted to state it then, I'm going to state it again now just to make sure that we're all aware that, you know, in five more years, this is going to come back around and we won't have the ARPA funding here to help us. So as there are other things the city's going to need, but just to make sure everybody's cognizant of it, goals to work toward moving forward. Thank you.
All said.
Adam.
Yes, Bonnie.
John, was this done five years ago?
Yes, actually five, I think it's six now, so we're slightly behind.
Okay, that, that's why I asked.
Twenty sixteen. Yep.
And this is, five years ago is when we started seeing some more of the problems.
Yeah, this, this actually leads to some of our cross pipe replacements. So this could potentially lead to physical levy work.
That's what I thought. Thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions from other members of council?
I do have just, where it says work timeframe, their intention is to complete that in the fall of '23. Does this push us back too far because of that?
Not that I know of. I didn't, I didn't ask the Army Corps per se, but I try to run as many contracts because I can, but I'm
Understand.
it's difficult to be in one, you know.
Understand. And then just something, kind of a housekeeping thing, if I can add that. We're, we're talking a lot about the levy as of late. And last council meeting, we voted to have, to run the concurrent study along with the Army Corps of Engineers. If we could get an updated budget of where we stand on funding that we're intending to pull from ARPA, so that way we don't get surprised here in the next couple of months that we're running too much.
In regards to levy itself?
Correct. Correct. So this being 132,000 and
We had 2.1 allocated, is that right?
I'm sorry.
We had 2.1 allocated for ARPA.
Hang on, I'll double, I'll double check real quick.
It's 2.1, yes.
Yeah.
And 2.3 for RACB's run.
Yep. Given what, let's talk about RACB. I mean, given the time that it was going to take and then whatever has to happen with DP, that might be more prudent to move that 2.3 from RACB. So we'll see how things shake out timeline was, but keep that in the back of your minds is, you know.
Just, just to be updated on it, because I don't want to be surprised. And we talked, the chamber has roughly $500,000 that we'd hope to be able to take advantage of for the study. So if we can get an answer on that, whether that's going to have to come from ARPA funds or whether it's going to have to come from
I think the mayor wanted to mention something.
That'd just be great to know where we stand.
And also waiting on the congressionally directed spending as well. So we may not have taken any from the chamber or ARPA. And I think Councilman Yoder shared the email
He did.
that Congressman Keller worked on. So we are, we did get to go ahead there too. So that was very good news as well. But yes, we can give you an update on where we stand, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bider. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, John.
Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item 12, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution awarding the construction services for East Fourth Street Improvement Projects to Glen O. Hallbaker.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Mr. Sander.
Yes, good evening again. So tying into the Old City totality here this evening, this is awarding the construction of the, what I call the DeSavos Block, Fourth Street from Penn to Basin to the lowest responsive bidder, which in this case was Glen O. Hallbaker. There were two bidders on the project. Myself and Ms. Frank, our city clerk had the bid opening a couple of weeks ago. And the low bidder was Glen O. Hallbaker in the amount of $861,383.80. This is paid via, the project will be funded with, in part by a state MTF grant and matched with local funding matched from the county. Hallbaker wanted, the low bidder wanted to see if we could get this awarded sooner rather than later due to the availability right now of steel materials. So that's over here.
Understood.
This was discussed in Public Works.
Understood. Thank you, John. This was discussed in Public Works, Mr. Allison.
Yes, we did discuss it and it wasn't a long discussion because this is in plan and, and part of the project and the money's set aside for it. So it's about as brief as you can get.
Real quick, I just wanted to add that what this is generally speaking, new roadway surface all around, obviously. New water line paid for by the Water Authority, all new sidewalk, fully ADA compliant, safety lighting, lighting, and also vegetative trees, basically.
Thank you, John. Any other comments or questions from members of council related to this item? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, if you ask for my vote.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes zero. Item fifteen, certificate of apartment is from the Historic Architectural Review Board. We've got one item at three thirty one Louisa Street. I will turn it over to Mr. Memmy. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, President Yoder, members of council. This project was reviewed by Harb over a series of meetings. It's for replacement of about thirty five windows. They're going to be replacing them with wood windows to. Be consistent with with the requirements on in the Harb district and the paint colors to match what is there right now. They're also going to be doing some other. Improvements to the cedar shingles that are on the side of the building. Everything was reviewed, discussed thoroughly, and there was a positive vote out of the Harb board.
Thank you, Skip. Uh, Mr. Byder.
For clarification on our agenda, it says Louisa Street, but in the packet it says Locust Street. So.
So it is Locust Street.
I believe it's Locust Street, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for catching that, Eric, for the record. Um, any comments or questions related to the certificate of appropriateness? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Item sixteen, except for filing filing Finance Committee meeting minutes from June seventh and twenty first, two thousand twenty two. The controllers report for June two thousand twenty two and the Veterans Memorial Park Commission minutes from July eleventh, two thousand twenty two. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second motion in a second. Any comments or questions related to the minutes we're filing? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item seventeen announcements. I'm gonna first announce. We're gonna be having the executive session following the council meeting this evening related to matters of litigation. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, September fifteenth, right here, seven PM. Upcoming meetings, City Hall was closed for the Labor Day holiday holiday on Monday. On Tuesday, September sixth at noon is our planning commission. Monday, September twelfth at four PM is our recreation commission. Tuesday, September thirteenth at one PM is Finance Committee, two thirty PM Public Works. Wednesday, September fourteenth, nine AM is the Economic Revitalization Committee, eleven thirty AM Public Safety, three thirty PM O and E Pension. Thursday, September fifteenth, ten thirty AM was our zoning hearing board, and at seven PM is our city council meeting. On our item eighteen comments, are there any comments from members of city council this evening? Mr. Mackey.
Well, are we gonna be reading these? Emails that we received into the record tonight? And if if so, I I mean, I do have something to say about. One of these particularly, but I don't know if we want to wait till. Public comment? Or if we think that's. To do since.
That is totally up to you.
Okay. Well, aside from that. We did open, we sort of opened the ARPA budget tonight. Do we have any updates, Mayor, on the redevelopment authority, land bank authority? I mean, we are sitting on close to five and a little more than five and a half million dollars in lost revenue.
So actually, Norm is working right now. We're working on the RDA Land Bank on an agreement between the city community development and RDA slash land bank. Because the land bank and RDA obviously don't have any staff, and so we reached out to Norm to work on an agreement where. Once we start, once the land bank and RDA start to acquire properties or just have activity. That community development, and it wouldn't be a large portion of their time, but they could do some of the paperwork, et cetera. The RDA Land Bank, we need an agreement in place in order for that to happen. So our goal is hopefully later this month that will come in front of city council. And also the RDA slash land bank authorities to get that agreement, and then we can start to move forward with RDA and land bank. To start to have some of their action being taken by one or both of those authorities.
Okay. So I mean, if nobody else has anything. We did receive two. I guess you would say complaints. Would that be the right word for? So, Mr. Mayor, I mean, Gary's not here anymore, so he might be also someone to talk to about this. For the record, we received. An email through our city of Williamsport Get in Touch website from Mr. Chance Moore. Concerning a property that's next to his house that he was apparently told was on the demolition list by Joe Girardi, our former codes administrator. Do we know if that's the case? And is it? He seems to think that now that Mr. Girardi is gone, nobody at Codes can tell him. If it's on the list, if the list even exists.
I'm not sure. I can't ever what's the address, and I can look into it.
Give me one second here. Seven, seven seventeen Second Avenue.
I can check on that tomorrow and get back to you all and Mr. Moore.
I remember there being one over in Newbury as well. I think it was Moser Ave.
Yeah.
It was kind of in the same boat, and I don't know if that one ever had gotten looked into as well. I had been reached out to. I had forwarded over to Codes. I don't remember the address, Mayor Slaughter. I could try to find the email, but.
Moser Avenue, you said?
Yes, I believe so, yes. If you wouldn't mind looking into that one as well, that would be great.
Yeah.
And that one had been for a while, and I believe the. Individual was trying to purchase the property beside it, and we're running into issues because of that other property. So.
Sure. Yep, I can check on both. Yeah, I mean, I just generally speaking, you know, I think this is one thing. That we just want to make sure it's not falling through the cracks. Well, we currently don't have a code administrator. I know Gary's kind of holding down the port, but he also has a job to do as well. So I just want to make sure that we're. Not we, Codes specifically is staying on top of the things that they're supposed to be staying on top of.
Yep.
Mr. Pelisi.
If I may, John, thank you for bringing this up. I fully intended to make sure that this was brought up at the Exploded Properties Committee. Just to make sure it does not fall through the cracks. Thank you for. Bringing it here from the council.
And I guess just in the the spirit of fairness, we did receive another email from a Mr. John Bogle in reference to. Essentially loud vehicles. Cruising the circuit, Third and Fourth Streets. So I thought it was only fair that if I. Referenced Mr. Moore's email that I referenced that one as well. I think he also brings up a good point. This unfortunately is a problem that is a little harder to solve, I think. But I do think it's something that should be addressed somehow. Assistant Chief Bold, I know this is difficult, especially as the motorcycles drive by the. Building right now.
Perfect timing, perfect timing. Thank you, whoever that was.
Yeah. But I, you know, I would be interested to to take part in that conversation. I think there's any number of things that we could do. As a city, as a police department, to maybe try and combat this a little bit, so.
And I would add to that, and I guess I'll be a little greedy here with with my neighborhood, but it's it's all across the city, you know, I I know there's the the noise challenge. Downtown and in the residential areas right downtown there, but that noise is related to speed. There's a speed issue there, and there's a speed issue throughout the city. I can, I mean, John Sander, right across the street from me now. I think you were in the house, what, maybe a week? And five, four or five days, somewhere in there, and he reached out to me. He's like, what's going on with the stop sign? I live, we live on a four way intersection. And I bet you probably seven or ten times a day, people blow through that stop sign. Actually, over the weekend. There were two trucks. I'm pretty sure we're going about fifty or sixty miles an hour through the stop sign and and look, you know, we we called the police. They come, they sit, they respond, but. We don't want them sitting there or in other areas of town, you know, catching traffic citations, right? So. To piggyback on what John's saying, how do we address that, right? We've got ARPA money here. I mean, we have spent and allocated some for public safety, but you know, if there's something that we need to do to. Whether it's technology, making our department more efficient, I don't I don't know what it is, but it is an overarching issue to Mr. Bogle's point, Mr. Mackey's point. So I would be happy to be a part of that conversation, too. And it's a great thing for public safety to spearhead.
Yeah. Sure. To address the speeding, Pennsylvania Municipal League has been working for a number of years on local use of radar. The state legislature is not quite there, but I think they're almost there. We are the last state in the entire country to not allow our local departments to use radar. Not sure what the backstory on that is. Pretty much every department in the whole Commonwealth has advocated for the local use of radar. And we, there was just another. We're in Harrisburg towards the end of spring, beginning of summer, again advocating for that. So I think the state legislature is getting close to passing that bill. I obviously cannot speak for the state legislators, but I know. Large majority of the departments are in favor. So hopefully, at some point in the near future, of course PSP can use radar, but they're the only ones at this point. To the other issues that were discussed, yes, we can, we can have a conversation. With with the department and you all and see what we can do to alleviate some of those concerns. Obviously, it's not an easy fix, but. And as to Councilman Yoder's point, I don't think we want patrol just sitting at a red light listening with a decibel meter to see how. And then and then giving somebody a citation. I think that's sort of not a good use of the dollars, but we could look at possible other solutions. So. I agree. I just wanted to bring about the local use of radar. I've been asked about that a lot, and we just are not permitted to do that right now. So hopefully. At some point soon, we will be able to, not that I get a lot of calls or we get a lot of calls on speeding, but. Just to have another tool in our toolbox and for all of the department, local departments across the state, so. Hopefully so.
Mr. Pelisi.
I know I was one of the people asking you about the radar. I completely share your frustration, the safety of the the neighborhood, of course. I had almost come close to throwing some portable speed bumps out in the street for my own point, so.
Please don't do that.
Yep, but I I looking forward to hopefully that gets passed for the sake and safety of our community.
Any other comments from members of council?
Adam.
Also. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Oh, this, John, do you have another?
Go ahead. Bonnie, you're good.
I was pointing. That he would call on you.
Okay, on a lighter note. Even though I wasn't able to be at my store for Williams Four welcomes the world, we made an incredible impression on all the visitors that came to our city. The businesses did okay, as we always do, just okay. But it is so much fun, burning out a lot of good times with the people from all over the the world coming into the store. And just one other thing, tomorrow is First Friday. So again, for everybody to go downtown and enjoy First Friday.
Yeah, here, here, Bonnie. We absolutely did make a really good impression, and we do every year with Little League. I know it was bigger this year. And former President Bush came and I got I got lucky to shake his hand and and have ten seconds with him probably. And I told him, welcome, we were honored to have him, and he he said point blank. You should be very proud. You have a great city and a beautiful city here. And we absolutely do. We're very fortunate and. Many of the visitors from Little League said the same thing. So. Well said, Bonnie. Mr. Allison, you had a comment as well, sorry.
I just wanted to commend our our city employees, our Police Department, Fire Department, Streets and Parks. One of our council members, Mr. Mackey, that that, you know, they were the feet on the ground that kept everybody safe. It was a heightened year. Anniversary rise, but also security wise. Everything from the public's view, it seemed like everything went smoothly, but it took a lot of hard work to make that happen. So. Just commend all, everyone who participated in that, and it was essentially all our departments, so. Kudos to them.
Here, here. Any other comments from members of council?
I I'll just, while we're in the thank you mode, I'll just throw in the the Chamber of Commerce as well. They they really stepped up their game and. They were extremely helpful, especially in a lot of the planning of the events and helped us out with a lot of different things. Some new ideas that we we had that were able to put into place to help keep people safe. So just want to say thanks to them as well.
Here, here. All right. Seeing no more. Any comments from the administration? Here. Any comments from the public? All right, no comments from the news media. I don't see anybody here. All right, I'll take a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.